I'd like to call the special meeting a budget hearing for the Morganton City Council on June 15, 2020 to order. First order business is going to be a prerecorded invocation by Reverend John Hagman with the First Presbyterian Church.
Friends, let us pray. God, we give you thanks and praise for our beautiful city of Morganton. I ask that you would be with those who are hurting and lonely, anxious and afraid today. God, be with our city leaders, give them wisdom to make good decisions, and hearts that bend towards justice and righteousness for your name's sake and for the sake of your people here in this city. I ask all this in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen and amen.
I'd like to thank Reverend Hagman for that. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to amend the agenda for a resolution.
Make a motion to amend the agenda?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have a resolution introduced. I'm going to ask Mayor Pro Tim Wendy Cato to please read that resolution.
It's a resolution on racism and policing. We, the mayor and city council of the city of Morganton, have, like all Americans, been watching and hearing the events that have shaken our country in the last few weeks. Events that came to a head after the horrific killing of George Floyd in Minneapolis. As elected officials and as individuals, we wish to express as best we can in mere words our response to the current environment. We join with so many others in stating our revulsion at the actions of law enforcement officers, sworn to serve and protect, which caused the death of a helpless human being. We agree that it is hard to see his death as other than the result of inhumanity, mindless violence, and racism. As a council, we wish to reaffirm the attached June 1, 2020, statement of nearly 100 North Carolina mayors, black and white, from the largest cities to the smallest town, east and west, in urban counties and in rural ones, making a visible expression of solidarity and compassion. We also reaffirm the attached statement issued by Mayor Thompson, which was prepared with the assistance of the Western Piedmont Council of Governors. Aware that all of us on city council are white people over the age of 50, we acknowledge that we have not and could not have experienced the gulf and distrust that exists all too often in our society between people of color and the law enforcement agencies. We can, however, relate to the horror and pain that comes from watching the video of the death of Mr. Floyd and other similar videos. We can and do say aloud when things are quite simply wrong. We can and do say that our society, our country, and our community must do in assuring that justice is administered fairly, that racism and bias in policing is rejected, and that law enforcement does not treat people differently based on the color of their skin. We can and do require accountability from our own law, local law enforcement, just as the people of Minneapolis require accountability for the death of George Floyd. We can assert that here in Morganton, we, as the responsible elected officials, will assure that our Department of Public Safety continues to operate with the best possible policies and procedures, and continues to reach out openly to all segments of the community.
Okay. Thank you, Wendy. You've heard the resolution. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Wendy. Next on our agenda is the public hearing in consideration of the budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Call the public hearing to order. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to the public hearing?
Would you like me to give like a very brief, I promise, brief?
I would love that. Please, please.
Because I want to talk about it again. And obviously, June 1, we talked about the budget a lot. Just to remind those of you viewing at home, so it is a $73 million budget that is down $6 million from the budget we're operating under this year. There's no recommended change in the tax rate. That would relieve it at 57 cents for the general tax rate and 14 cents per $100 value for the municipal service district tax rate. There's no change in garbage fees recommended. They would remain at $12 a month. There's no change in internet or phone charges. There would be an increase in video, which is the TV portion of Compass, effective January 1, 2021, and that would be $10 a month. There is no change in the water or sewer rates that are recommended. They would remain the same. The electric rates would decrease between 2 and 7.5% depending on the class of customer that you are. And the budget includes no COLA or merit increases for employees.
Thank you, Sally. I believe you've had some statements sent in. Ask our attorney, do you have some statements?
I do, Mr. Mayor. I didn't know if there's anyone that...
Does anyone in the audience like to speak? Louis?
If not, yes, because of the state of emergency, we had, in advertising this public hearing, we had stated that anyone who wished to provide comments might do so in it by submitting in advance a written statement by email. We've received four of those. And with your permission, I'll just read those in, identifying the speaker in each or the presenter in each case.
Please.
The first is from Abigail Taylor, who lives at 103 Falls Street. "I wanted to submit a comment on the upcoming budget meeting for the 2021 fiscal year. I want it to be known that many citizens, including myself, want to urge the Morganton City Council to include funds for a public review of the Morganton Public Safety Police Department's use-of-force policies and a series of public meetings to address systemic racism in our community. Whether anyone within the city government or the Public Safety Department believes that we have a racism problem or not, it is important to many citizens in Morganton that we stay on top of this issue and make sure we hold all in power accountable in light of current issues. This can only make Morganton a better place for all current citizens and future citizens. Thank you so much for your time." Secondly, from Mary Jo Johnson, 208 Evans Street. "I understand that the city budget is complex, and these are not easy times to fund all the necessary services. But working to prevent the problem of homelessness should be a high priority, our city prevention strategy. I hope our city will look for positive solutions." Third, from Edward Gildia, 108 Oakwood Street. "These days, perhaps even more than usual, the future is unpredictable. Something needs to change in each and every municipality in the country in order to bring an end to the systemic racism that has been America's Achilles' heel since day one. But it will be difficult to pinpoint the answer to our problems between now and when you vote to approve the budget. Please designate funds to be used for any initiatives, such as a review of use-of-force policies or the establishment of a joint task force that emerge as steps you and the citizens of Morganton deem necessary to take in the coming months. How much money will be enough? That is also difficult to predict. I can only suggest that the importance of how you act in this particular moment in history cannot be overstated. If Morganton gets this right, we will be an example for other towns on how to make sure that human rights and economic growth go hand in hand. If we get it wrong, we will still be an example. This is as important an investment in our infrastructure as any other item in the budget, perhaps the most important one we can make at this time." And finally, from Isaac Crouch, 103 Falls Street. "Although the movement to end systemic racism has spread across the globe, it is up to us locally to enact the change we want to see. The question before the council now is this. Will you watch this moment pass you by, or will you use the power granted to you by the citizens of Morganton to lead? The resources available for us to do this are plentiful. Mayors and city councils are uniquely positioned to introduce common sense limits on police use of force, which is why President Obama and the My Brothers Keeper Alliance have issued a call for you to commit to reviewing the MPD use-of-force policies, engaging our community by involving a diverse range of input, report these findings back to the community for feedback, and finally, to enact those reforms. Information provided by organizations such as Eight Can't Wait and Campaign Zero also offer clear steps backed by data that we can take locally to be a part of the solution. Some of these are simple and would take very little action on your part. Others are more comprehensive and require long-term dedication. Of course, by doing any of this, we aren't going to unilaterally end racism in our nation. However, by starting the process, you can provide a clear signal to the citizens of Morganton about your values, and we can imagine the systemic change we would see if cities around the country take similar actions. Conversely, taking no action will also provide important information to citizens to keep in mind at the ballot box. It is my hope that the council will partner with citizens, community leaders, nonprofits, and other governmental agencies in a commitment to end systemic racism through local action. Perhaps this is appropriate to include in the budget before you, and action can be taken now. If not, then the citizens of Morganton will look forward to seeing what other forms it will take. Thanks for your time." All of those statements were received timely and asked to be read into the record.
Thank you, Louis. Does anyone else wish to speak? All right, I'll call the public hearing closed, and I need a motion, please.
Motion to adopt a budget ordinance for fiscal year 2020, 2021.
I have a motion to adopt the budget ordinance. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a second motion, please.
Motion to adopt the schedule of fees and charges for fiscal year 2020, 2021.
I have a motion to adopt the schedule of fees. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the schedule of fees and charges for 2020, 2021, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Next, we have some budget amendments, consideration of year-end budget amendments. Sally?
So this is the meeting where we take a look at our year-end numbers and project what's going to happen the next couple of weeks and do a little bit of cleanup. You have three items before you tonight. The first is a motion to approve a general fund budget amendment in the amount of $474,700. And what that is, we are recognizing three sources of revenue that we didn't plan for in the current budget. $24,700 in state and federal grants received by Public Safety. An increase in our current year avalorum taxes by $100,000. Remember, last year, we were guessing about a property revow without all the tax information in. And so it was better than what we estimated. And then a state appropriation of $350,000 for the storm drainage work that happened down on South Sterling Street back in the fall. Then we have reductions in the salary and wages line items in comma in three of the divisions in recreation, in the cemetery and grounds, and also in public safety. We have a reduction in recreation revenue, a reduction in sales tax of $140,000, and then a reduction in our appropriated fund balance, and that's how you balance that budget amendment.
Okay. What's the wish of council?
Motion to approve the general fund budget amendment for $474,700.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We have another budget amendment, Sally.
We do, and this one is in the water fund, and it is for $219,200. At the beginning of the year, we expected a waterline project to serve the new hotel, I mean, the new restaurant and ultimately the hotel down on exit 105, that we would be contracting for that waterline construction. The developer did that and paid for that, and those funds did not run through us. So this is just reducing the water fund budget by that amount.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to adopt a budget amendment of $219,200 to appropriate adjustments in the water fund.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Sally, a third amendment?
And the last one is in the Compass Cable Fund, and this basically deals with internet and then some revenue recognition. None of these budget amendments are, require an additional budget. They're actually reducing the budget that we have in front of us. This is increasing the budget, but only by the amount of revenues that we have received. So we are getting a reimbursement for services from a private contribution for a project of $11,500. An increase in internet revenue of $55,000, telephone revenue of $22,000, and then utility rents is where just your video payments for that part of Compass come in, $76,400. That's a recognition, again, of the fact that we continue to lose TV customers slower than the national average and slower than we are predicting. Increasing two expenditures for increased internet connectivity, $18,900. And then in the capital, $146,000, and that was to purchase equipment that is going to give us more bandwidth for the internet.
What's the wish of council?
I make a motion to adopt a budget amendment for $164,900 to appropriate funds and accomplished funds.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Next, we have a public hearing in consideration to put amendment to the city action plan for fiscal year 2019 to include the COVID-19 funding. So I'd like to call the public hearing to order.
Yes. So we have with us tonight Lisa Helton, who is the Western Piedmont Council of Government representative, who has helped us administer this fund for quite a few years now. Twenty, really? Wow. Well, for 20 years now. And this is consideration for amending the current plan that we're operating under because of some federal relief funds that are due to the pandemic and COVID-19. And Lisa's going to take it from there.
This is a required public hearing. HUD has provided $87,803 to the city of Morganton to be used for COVID-related activities for public services. For public services is what we have talked about doing that will provide assistance to low and moderate income people. As soon as we send the amendment in, we will hopefully hear when the funding will be available so we can start spending it to help the community.
So they have not made the dollars available yet. And if we do anything with this prior to that, because the emergency is going on now, we would need to front that money, and then we would be reimbursed for that. In talking with HUD about these dollars, a couple of things. They have advised that we do this amendment as soon as possible and that we get into spending and helping as soon as possible. We are looking for, and you have a sample packet in your package that you received, partners, and again, as Lisa says, in the public service area, which would be partners in the community who would provide services to the citizens that qualifies as low to moderate income. And we are recommending that we look at helping these individuals with paying past utility bills, past due utility bills. With the governor's orders, we have four months that there have been no requirements for utility payments. And while on its face, that is a good thing, in reality, that is very difficult for a lot of our customers. And they are digging holes. His order did not say the money was not due. We will collect no fees, no late fees, no penalties, nothing like that. But the balance for the utilities that were used is due and is going to remain with that customer. And we have quite a few entities in the community that work with customers on a regular basis to try to help with this. It's usually in extreme weather situations that this occurs. But come another month, we are going to have a lot of customers that will struggle to ever get out of this hole. And hopefully, this would be a way to help them. The other hope is that if they get help with this, then they can take current resources that they may have available to help with all of their other bills and to help with their current expenses. In addition, we would like to consider offering, if you will, another round of dollars out of this to our local nonprofits that also can show that they help low and moderate income citizens that are dealing with COVID. And this has to be COVID-related, COVID-related issues. And so we would be asking for applications, again, from our local nonprofits that would help with that. And in addition to that, if there are any local organizations that could work with small businesses who also employ low and moderate income individuals, and they're willing to give that information to us and supply that, to work with them and help them with past due utility bills as well. Because we have an awful lot of small businesses that are racking up large amounts as well, which is going to make it difficult for them to pay their employees and to keep the business open.
Thank you. Has anyone in the audience wished to speak during the public hearing? No one's speaking? Oh, excuse me.
I did have a question about the...
Okay. Public hearing is now closed. Lisa, this money is coming from the CARES Act, the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions from council? I need a motion, please.
Make a motion to amend the 2019 action plan to include COVID-19 funding.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Need another motion, please?
Make a motion to amend the projected budget ordinance to receive $87,803.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Okay. Next on our agenda is a public hearing in consideration for the five-year consolidated plan from 2020 to 2024 in consideration of the action plan for the year 2020. Call the public hearing to order. Anyone like to speak concerning this particular public hearing? Lisa?
Can we give a little intro first? I think, and I'll give a little bit and then turn it over to Lisa. So this is where, as a CDBG entitlement city, we are required to do a five-year action plan. And so this is our upcoming five-year action plan. And so it is for year 2020 till year 2024. And in that process, we've had advertisements and things, and Lisa can talk about that. This is where we create the types of programs and opportunities with which we would spend our CDBG monies that we get each year. So we are looking at some of the things that we have done in the past five years that have been successful and hoping to include those. We are a very small entitlement city. We used to be the smallest one in the country, and now I believe we're like the next to the smallest one in the country. We get anywhere in any given year over the last 20 years, we've gotten anywhere from $138,000 to I believe one year, we got $184,000 is about the top that we've ever gotten. In setting this plan and trying to look at what ultimately is going to have the most impact on our community with what we're very appreciative for, but which is a small amount of dollars, we have tried to do that in ways that we leverage against other projects or larger projects or things that give us a larger impact. And out of that, a couple of the programs that we have done for several years now that continue to be extremely popular. The Small Business Loan Program, which is tied to job creation, and also the program where we fund our nonprofits and do the grant cycle for the local nonprofits to help them as well. Both of those are items that we get requests for over and over and all of the time. Lisa can talk about the other things. I just also wanted to say, we're going to do two things. We're going to have the public hearing on the five-year plan, and then we're going to adopt the project ordinance for the one year of that, which we're receiving $149,257.
Lisa?
So you do have a summary there. So what we try to do is look forward to activities that maybe we might possibly do within the next five years. So a few of those, like Sally said, the Small Business Loan Program is very popular. So we will continue to do that, the grants to nonprofits. We do want to put some money in there for public infrastructure and facility improvement acquisition and then clearance in spot and blighted areas. And then there's always money there for administration of the project.
And the administration is tied to a limit in something. After this, you will consider a contract of renewing that with the COG so that Lisa would continue to administer this. We've done some, we've torn down some blighted properties with this money. We've built some sidewalks with this money. We have supported some water and sewer infrastructure in low to moderate income areas. Those are some of the public infrastructure things that we've done in the last handful of years.
We're still in the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak?
Greetings. Beverly Carlton, Executive Director of Olive Hill Community Economic Development Corporation. We're located at 200 South College Street, Suite A in Morganton. I appreciate this opportunity to address the council on issues related to public hearing items, specifically the five-year consolidated plan and the action plan for 2020. We, Olive Hill, use the consolidated plan for information to apply for various funding, federal funding. Thus, this is our main interest. First, let me clear up a misconception. I'm not here because we turned money back in last year. I'm here, our actual grant application for funds was denied. Olive Hill applied to do fair housing counseling for the entire grant amount available. The majority of the funds were split between two other nonprofits. Olive Hill was offered a reimbursable grant of around $1,400 to buy office supplies. That was not what we applied for, and it was not needed. So we did not accept that offer. My appearance before you tonight has little to do with wanting the CDBG funding, but it's about these two plans that are vague and should not be passed for the following reasons. How much time do I have?
It's a public hearing. You're not limited to three minutes.
Three minutes killed me last time. Anyway, I do want to use this time wisely. And in light of today's racially charged environment, it's important to note that the old social contract has been broken. I was a child during the civil rights movement. So I was very much aware of what was going on then, and we thought we had overcome. But we haven't. Communities of colors are demanding a new social contract that centers on our health and well-being. As a consolidated plan and action plan is to lay out housing affordability and community economic development strategy that addresses the needs of low and moderate income residents of Morganton to be used as a guide in decision-making for the investors, nonprofits, and is required by HUD. I want to point out the following things first in the action plan. In reference to Section 2, summarize the objectives and outcomes identified in the plan. There is no reference from the Housing and Homeless Needs Assessment, the housing market analysis, and both those assessments have been done in the past two years. Nothing has been included from these documents. Reference to the Broughton Hospital reused project does not say how it would be used for low to moderate income people, and the consolidated plan states the housing component would be market rate apartments. How you plan to house low to moderate income people, how you expect them to afford these units. The old Walmart Shopping Center reused project, is this still a viable project or has it been completed? That center appears to be at least 92% filled. The South Sterling Street corridor, how does this create jobs for the target group? Could you be more specific? Elimination of slum and blighted housing units and vacant buildings in the city through acquisition, demolition, clearance of abandoned and or condemned structures. Does this mean if we, Olive Hill, came up with a project to acquire property that these dollars could be used for that purpose? Increase economic and job opportunities for low and moderate income persons through and designated redevelopment areas? I didn't understand this statement. Where and how would this be accomplished? Implementing of the Mission 2020-2030, which is an economic and land development plan, is vague. What are you planning to do? Stimulating home ownership opportunities for low and moderate income home buyers by providing down payment assistance and first-time home buyer counseling through the Home Uniform Consortium Program. As far as I know, home provides the down payment assistance. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, and not the council. But you're also not aware that Olive Hill does have a member relationship with the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency's Community Partners Loan Pool with down payment assistance and closing costs. I have met with Lisa distributing information and awareness of the program and COG also, but they still ignore us. Continue supporting programs offered by nonprofits that benefit low and moderate income people and meet the requirements of the CDBG program. Could we please have some detail, who and how? Initiate efforts on a regional basis to further study and address homelessness. Assist nonprofits with obtaining funding for addressing the needs of homeless persons. When is this done and how? And reference has been made to the continuum of care meetings, which I do attend. And I really haven't seen anybody representing the city there. If I'm wrong, I stand corrected. Continue efforts to reduce and eliminate lead-based paint hazards through education and testing, utilizing services of the Burke County Health Department. Lead-based paint is also part of our housing counseling. So we do talk to people about that. Continuation of efforts to further fair housing and minimize relocation or displacement in all programs. When is this done and how? This information is something that I can use when I'm working on proposals for federal money. And it is not in this continuum of care. I do go to the state plan. The state plan does have more information in it. But this plan is very vague. And it is really frustrating to read it. On page eight of the consolidated plan, referencing the survey that was sent out to the nonprofits or to the different agencies, groups, and organizations and others who participated in the process and described jurisdictions, consultations with housing, social service agencies, and other entities. And the chart on page nine, Table 2, has the question, how was the agency group consulted? And what are the anticipated outcomes of the consultation or areas for improved coordination? It's vague. It is vague. No real information. There was no correlating of information from the survey to view the responses from the agencies. Our responses are important and should be the basis for consideration of this action plan, which public input is required. On page 22 on the chart with public comments, Olive Hill's questions were specifically about two houses in the city limits which needed rehab. In the consolidated plan, there's a reference to the needs assessment, and that is so vague, and there's no real answers. How were these needs determined? Describe the jurisdiction's need for public services, the data sources for labor force, business sector, occupations by sector, etc., etc. This is from 2011 to 2015 data. It is old data. There is new data available for this. Page 84 of the consolidated plan describes the standards and procedures that the jurisdiction will use to monitor activities carried out in furtherance of the plan and will use to ensure long-term compliance with requirements of the programs involved, including minority business outreach and the comprehensive planning requirements. And you stated that minority businesses are considered on programs that require bidding. So what is the history of successful bids being awarded to minorities? There's nothing that really says anything about outreach to minority businesses. So most of the times, you know, the information we know may be published in the news whirl, but everybody does not always see those. My suggestions are do not approve this plan, to send this back to committee for revision, to correlate the information from participating agencies, and submit a better plan. Drink some water. On February 11, 2019, I had an appointment with Sally Sandy to talk. She came to the appointment and almost immediately remembered that she had to be somewhere else. This was a scheduled appointment with me. She has not to this day rescheduled or showed interest in why I wanted to meet with her. I was to talk about the training that I attended with Freddie Mac and how they wanted CDCs to initiate joint projects with their local governments to make home happen, to collaborate on designing and financing first-time home buyer programs, which includes housing development production. My city does not want to include Olive Hill in anything, even when asked. I've talked also with Philip Luckadoo and Lisa Helton to no avail. This is what structured racism is. The color of my skin makes it easy for me to be ignored. Apparently, there is no trust. Olive Hill is not considered a valued organization. And this is even more magnified that we weren't invited to be a part of the Housing Committee forum to look at housing needs and solutions. Olive Hill staff has received training over 15 years of housing development from the following sources with the expectation that we will come back and work with our local governments to produce housing. We've done some single-family homes, but not on the scale that we are capable of doing. That takes partnerships and collaborations of which we cannot seem to secure. Many of our sister organizations across the state have been embraced by their local governments and have been very successful in fulfilling the community needs that Burke County and the city of Morganton continue to struggle with. Staff has acquired professional development certification trainings from our national intermediaries, including Neighbor Works of America. We've done certification in an overview of affordable housing development and the basic steps of affordable housing development process. We've done the real estate finance nuts and bolts. We've done the rental housing development finance. We've also... We've also done the CDBG program, the home program, the low-income housing tax credit program, the new market tax credit program, the National Housing Trust Fund, how to use that, how to maintain compliance in the low-income housing tax projects, understanding underwriting successful loans for nonprofit developers, how to structure the deal, making it a reality, creative project financing strategies, and creative financing other strategies, using bonds to finance affordable housing development, budget basics, decoding the mysteries of the pro forma. Trainings have also been received from our other national intermediaries, the Rural Community Assistance Corporation, who partners with nonprofit housing organizations to develop, finance, and operate affordable single and multifamily housing, the National Community Reinvestment Coalition, which we are a member. They provide training academies and technical assistance. They would come help us with whatever we would need with any housing development projects that we would have. They understand how to use the Community Reinvestment Act, the Fair Lending Laws, the Home Mortgage Disclosure Act, the HMDA, the Truth in Lending Act, the Real Estate Settlement Procedures, Home Ownership and Equity Protection Act, Fair Housing and Foreclosure Prevention. Our Economic Justice Campaign cites pilots in innovative community partnerships to enhance the delivery of financial, technical, and social services to individual consumers, homeowners, and small businesses. Our state intermediary is the North Carolina Housing Coalition. We are the member organization representing the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency for the Community Partners Loan Pool with down payment assistance and closing costs. We've had a lot of training. In that lot of training, we're putting it on just a few things, but we could be magnified and really be helping our city and our county. We suggest that the city considers creating an Office of Equity and Inclusion. This office would play a unique role towards maximizing the access and opportunities that all people have to satisfy essential needs, advance their well-being, and achieve their full potential. An Equity and Inclusion Direction would play a key role in moving the city organization towards successful advancement of equity with Morganton through understanding, analyzing, and eliminating the root causes of racial disparities and advancing equitable policies, practices, and procedures. A model program for this is in Asheville. No matter the size of the jurisdiction, economic equality is important to all citizens. This information comes from the website, the Government Alliance on Race and Equity. In this moment, this is a statement from their leader. In this moment, we at Race Forward affirms with a new sense of purpose our work of catalyzing the racial justice movement. In media advocacy, training, research, policy, and narrative, we will continue to center communities of color that are setting the course for a shared equitable future. We will continue to convene those working for racial justice to share best practices in the movement for equity and justice. We will continue to tell the untold stories, advance the best ideas, and lift up the leadership of our communities. We will continue to advance decriminalization, demilitarization, and restorative justice. We will continue to organize and lead governments to advance racial equity. We stand with the movement for Black lives and communities of color across the country who are calling for divestment from police and investment in health, education, housing, arts and culture, and the environment. We support community calls for policy changes, such as establishing a national database of decertified officers and ending cash bail. We commit to work with governments, institutions, and community organizations to advance far-reaching reforms and to abolish the current system of policing in prisons. We support and lift up the work of local Black-led organizations on the ground in communities across the country, like the Black Visions Collective, Reclaim the Block, and these organizations that are in Minneapolis and St. Paul. Most of all, we vow that we will not stop until we all live in the kind of just, vital, multiracial democratic society that we all deserve. Justice is our horizon line. We look forward to walking alongside you on this march to freedom. This was in solidarity from Glenn Harris, President of Race Forward. We've already read in the newspapers and been told verbally that revenues are down for the city due to many factors. However, when an issue is of utmost importance, like hiring the people to work with BDI for the housing study and the housing assessment, the money's found. We need this. It could be supported by the county, and other local governments could participate as you do with other similar needs. We could also apply together for a grant to cover this needed position, and I'm talking about the position for Office of Equity and Inclusion. There's much work to be done here. As we attempt to reconcile the continued misapplication of justice and lack of accountability, we are open to work with the local government and other stakeholders to strategize and invest in solutions that address the disparate impact of COVID-19 and to resource programs that help bring opportunity and equality to all. We stand together with our national intermediary networks in an effort to respond to local community needs and provide safe, secure places to call home. Historically, Black folks have always had to ask for something. We were excluded. We had to ask all the time to be included, and that's what's happening now. We've been here for 22 years, 22, and we are still not a valued organization in this county. And it's time for this type of structured systemic racism to stop. We're just as valuable as anybody else. We make mistakes, yeah. I don't get all the proposals that I applied for, no. But I'm open for help. I'm open for constructive criticism. Our organization is a valuable organization that serves many people in many different ways. If they don't have an answer, most of the time, they come to us, and we'll find the answer for the people, the residents of our community. It's time. It's time for me to take a stand. I'm afraid. I'm standing here shaking because I remember the days of the Ku Klux Klan. I remember the days when my house was egged. I remember the days when we were spit on because we stood up for justice. I led a group out of Morganton High School in 1969 because our people were not getting respect. Our boys couldn't play. Our girls couldn't cheer for the boys on the team, but they wanted our people to play. We know about redlining. We know about people being guided to different communities because we don't, not in my backyard. They don't want people here. We know about all those things. And it does bring a little fear in me, but I have to stand up for justice. I have to stand up for righteousness. I have to stand up and say, it's time, city, for you to start recognizing us as a valued partner and actually working with us from this day forward. Let it be so. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak at the public hearing? Okay. Public hearing is now closed. What's the wish of council? Council having comments? Will we all do the motion first?
Do we have to have a motion to discuss?
We need a motion, then we can discuss the motion.
That's right, yeah. So.
Motion to adopt the CDBG five-year consolidated plan for 2020-2024.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Discussion.
So Sally, is there a timeline that we're working with here that's...
Yeah, Lisa can address our timeline for our responses required to HUD.
Yeah, usually, we send this in by May, but because of the COVID-19, they've given us a little extra time. But yeah, we need to get this sent in because it takes them so many days to process, so we don't get our funding until they receive this and are able to go through their time period to look over it. I do want to address one thing she brought up was about the information. A lot of the information, as far as the numbers, is pre-populated by HUD. That's the most updated numbers that they have. It did include some newer information that I got from the data service of the council governments.
Thank you. Other comments from city council?
I just feel that during this time, we really need to address some of the question marks that were brought up, and I think we can pass it and then follow through with an answers to some of the questions that Beverly brought up. For instance, when she responded that they were vague, I'm sure we can give her specific examples in the statement that there is. I think that we can get more information to the statements. I know that they're generalizations.
Some of the information, the lead entity to see Lenore, they have more information they have to provide because they're leading. Some of those questions might be answered by the lead entity, and they have a separate consolidated plan that they do. She knows, you know Rick Oxford, so he might be able to provide you with some information also.
Or we could get Rick to come over, and we can have a meeting.
Yeah, I think that that would be a good idea. I think that Beverly's brought up enough question marks, which we're supposed to provide answers. And so I think that because of the timing of the fact that we have to adopt this, I think that we need to go ahead and adopt it. But I think that we need to pay attention to what has been said and come up with some answers to the questions.
So I think that's my question. If we adopt it, this can still be worked through to answer questions and to make things more specific.
And Lisa, absolutely. This plan is not a static thing or a set-in-stone thing. It's a plan, and you can change it and amend it and go through that process at any time during the five years that you choose to. Absolutely.
Other comments, council? I have a motion to have a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we need another motion for the action plan for 2020.
I'd make a motion to adopt the action plan for 2020, including the project budget ordinance. We need the figure 149,0257.
Correct, because that's what they have notified us we will get.
Have a motion to have a second. Okay, Chris, thanks. Any discussion?
You can change that at any time also.
That's my question. Because I do think we owe and should look at, given our overall situation with the world right now, and though that amount is static, its use is...
The amount is what they're going to give us, but you can change that at any point.
Sure.
It's an amendment process to a project budget, basically.
But I do support the idea of the electric bill, I mean, the utility bill, because...
Okay, so this is separate from that, okay? So that is very specific dollars that they sent for 2019. This is what starts in 2020.
So that can include our changes, okay?
Any more questions? Lisa, thank you so much. All in favor to adopt the action plan for 2020, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of a contract for CDBG administration services. Sally?
And this is what we spoke about earlier with the dollars. The administration fee for the $149,000 is $29,000. This is in the form of a contract with the COG. The $850 is for local costs, whether there's advertising for public hearings and things like that.
What's the wish of council?
Make a motion to approve administration contract with Western Piedmont Council of Governments for the 2020 CDBG entitlement program at a cost of $29,850.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of the renewal of agreement to participate in the 2020-21 Western Piedmont Stormwater Partnership. Sally?
So the stormwater partnership, we have been participating in with other local governments in the area that are required to have a Phase II stormwater permit with the state. We have been doing this with the COG for nine years, and basically, they consolidate and help do the advertising and outreach and education portion to meet our permit requirements. All the participants pay the same amount in. The COG does the work for the group, and we don't have to repeat it and do it ourselves. This contract is for $6,689.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to approve the agreement to participate in the 2020-2021 Western Piedmont Stormwater Partnership at a cost of $6,689.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Sally, for discussion, does the county participate in this also? Do you know if they participate?
I do not. I don't think Burke County is one of the participants. It's all cities, as far as I know.
For stormwater, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, next is consideration of award of a contract with Nexon Puit, PLLC, for lobbying service. Sally?
That's Louie.
Oh, Louie, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is one of those good news things I think we can bring before the council. Our current contract with our lobbyist in Raleigh, Nexon Puit, actually runs through the end of this year, but at our request, they have agreed to renegotiate the contract. And the new one, this proposed one, would run through the end of 2021. The current arrangement was for a total of $95,000 for two years. This contract will provide for exactly the same level of services for $80,000 over two years. So considerable adjustment. And I think it is only fair to say that Michelle Frazier and David Farrell, our lobbyists with this firm, were very willing and anxious to renegotiate the contract because they, just in all fairness, they like working with us, and they enjoy working with what, for that firm, is a pretty small client, the City of Morganton. But they enjoy it, I think. And we certainly think that they are providing a valuable service to us as our eyes and ears in Raleigh. And of course, Morganton is uniquely situated among cities and needing eyes and ears in Raleigh constantly because of all of our interactions with many state government agencies.
Thank you, Louie. What's the wish for council?
Make a motion to approve and enter into a contract with Nexon Puit, PLLC, for provision of lobbying services for 2020-2021.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of award of a contract for abatement and demolition of the building at 115 East Meeting Street, which is currently, was the Jailhouse Gallery. Sally?
The former home of the Arts Council because they have moved. This is a project that we have, it's been ongoing now for several years. We did receive informal bids on June 9, and we received four bid responses. And the lowest responsive responsible bid came from D.H. Griffin of Hickory, North Carolina, lots of experience in building demolition. Their price, and you have the bid tab in your information, for the building was $38,850. We bid as an alternative because we didn't know if we would have enough funding to do away with the foundation that is there and not have to do that ourselves and try to figure out how to put that in with the Courthouse Square project. They bid $5,770 for that. If you add the two together, you get something that is underneath our budget amount, and the total amount is $44,655. We would ask that you would consider awarding both pieces of that contract to them, and this is something that would take place after July 1.
What's the wish of council?
Make a motion to authorize a contract with D.H. Griffin in the amount of $44,655 for the demolition of the building and foundation at 115 East Meeting Street, Jailhouse Gallery.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
So Sally, this will start in July, or do they have any idea?
We don't have a date for that yet, so we will award the contract, we'll get the paperwork, and then we'll set a mobilization time.
I understand part of the project, the Courthouse Square, will be removing trees. This is just the Jailhouse Gallery building and the foundation?
Correct, and then stabilizing that end of the square.
Other questions? Other questions? Chris?
Just to make sure, Sally, that folks know that some of the artwork in the windows and mosaics in it have already been taken down and saved correctly.
There's three left.
There's three left. There have been a lot of things moved out of there and taken to the Arts Council in their new location. Some other things, there are a couple of doors that the History Museum is in the process of accepting, and they'll be sending over a letter regarding that. There's several other items that Michael Burley has gotten out of there for use on the Courthouse Square to commemorate that.
Other questions? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of award of contract for the Powell Bill, which is resurfacing city streets for 2020. Sally?
So the next two items are contracts and projects that will happen after July 1 that are included in the budget that you passed for 2020-21. But as is often the case, since we do not have a July meeting, we go ahead and try to get the bids in for this now so that this project can take place as soon as the new year takes, takes effect. We did not do any street resurfacing in the current year, and that is one of the things that when we had to look at saving dollars and our Powell Bill dollars started going away, we did not do. In next year's budget that you just passed, effective July 1, will be $385,000 for street resurfacing. We took bids on June 11th and received bids from five paving contractors, and you have the bid tabs in your information. So that's pretty monumental because for the last several years, DOT has had all of those paving contractors tied up, and we have been second fiddle, if you will, because we're definitely not the size player of DOT. To get five bids in what we believe are good prices, so they bid this based on unit cost, and you don't know exactly because the amount of asphalt that ultimately gets used, you don't know exactly until it happens. Maymead, of course, was the low bidder out of Mountain City, Tennessee. They bid $307,041, which I find to be very strange, the one cent, but that's what they bid, and that is for the resurfacing of Buchell Street. And that is really the whole thing, and you have a map in with the schoolwork, the hotel work, the water and sewer line improvements along that road to increase our capacity and service to that quadrant of town. That road is in terrible shape, so we feel really lucky to get to do the whole thing. Because that doesn't meet our full budget, Development Design and Public Works have gone back and looked at it, and we have a second street that we believe we can do and stay within our budget, and that is North Terrace Place, that also has graded out pretty needy on our grading system for resurfacing. So we would ask that you award the contract not to exceed 385, and that allow the staff to work through these two streets and the unit cost.
Thank you. What's the wish of council?
Motion to authorize a contract with Maymead, Inc. of Mountain City, Tennessee, for the 2020 Powell Bill resurfacing of city streets in Morganton in the amount not to exceed $385,000.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of award of contract for resurfacing the Freedom Park Walking Track. Sally?
Yes, back in February, when we took our tour out there, you got to see the condition of that track and understanding that if we don't do something to it soon, it's going to be an entire redo, which is going to cost more dollars. At the time, we were looking at it, and that track was done much like the Greenway, and it is not as wide as would be required today to have truly adequate spacing for biking and walking. In looking at this, the proposal includes adding to the side of the track to make it 12, 12 feet in width, which would then allow it to be multi-use by bikers and walkers. It's about 5,400 linear feet in taking bids, and we received four, which is also good. Midstate Contractors of Hickory was the lowest bid, and their original bid amount to us, and you again have your bid tabs included, was $196,632.15. These paving contractors like to have cents on their bids. That's obviously over our budget, so our staff has been negotiating with them, and we believe that we can get the additional width added to the track and some, some crack sealing work done and an overlay over the entire track for the $175,000 in the budget. What is gonna be iffy, whether we get to do it in this contract or not, and it will depend on how much asphalt and how much crack sealing actually has to happen, because right now it's all just estimated, would be the ramp that was bid in this that would give you the, I guess, a better entrance into the Greenway and to the park, which would be largely for the bikers. And then also questionable whether we will get to do the stripe in the thermoplasty, that paint that stays on forever that they apply. We may have to do that ourselves. So those are the couple of things that we have negotiated out at this moment, again asking you to do it in a not to exceed $175,000, so we can see if our bids come in that we could do some of that with additional dollars within that money.
What's the wish of council?
I'll make the motion to award a contract to Midstate Contractors of Hickory, North Carolina, for the Freedom Park Walking Track resurfacing in an amount not to exceed $175,000.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Sally, is that going to include the side trails that are marked on our map?
It is going to include, okay, so the little, the orange...
Right.
In there, aren't those the accesses? Looking at Rob. Oh, he's not looking at the picture.
Rob, there are three labeled side trails.
I believe that what's going to happen originally is only your yellow, and the orange is going to be if the dollars come in.
Okay.
Is how I would describe what you're looking at.
So the yellow, okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to just mention that I hope we can revisit bikes on that trail after the work's done.
Yes, and that's the goal.
I really am, I know the track is in really bad shape, but we just need to look at whether or not we feel comfortable with bikes out on it. It's one of the few places left that people can run, run and walk without fear of running over, being run over.
Understand. The other thing happening in conjunction with this, and some of the work has already happened, some of the lighting, we've had issues with the lighting, and it hasn't been working, and Electric is, is working on upgrading that to get that working while this is going on.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Members of council have anything to come before council? I would like to remind the public that we do not have a July meeting. We'll meet again in September, and we hope everyone...
August.
August, excuse me, and hope everybody stays safe over the summer. We are adjourned.
I don't know the tornado from the duck.